Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How you doing? Hey Zach, how you doing over there?
Doing well, how about yourself?
Um, unbelievable, thanks for asking.
That's good to hear, Mr. Mayor.
You get to, you get to sit in the big seat where Ms. Pandak sits.
That's right.
How does that make you feel?
Um, I feel, uh, I guess humbled that she, uh, thinks well enough of me to take her seat. She's in the big, big seat, uh, doing a trial, so.
No, I, I know she's down in the trial. Uh, but there's, yeah, uh, tuning in, Mrs. Pandak is in a big trial in another part of the state. So she sent her associate Zach to be in with us today.
Thanks for joining us, Zach.
No problem, thanks for having me.
Yep, so it's four of us and there is seven o'clock. I know that, um, a council lady, Miles wasn't feeling well today, so I did speak with her. Um, so she probably will not be joining us, but we will go ahead, uh, cause it is seven o'clock and call this meeting for order. Uh, roll call please, Lisa.
Excuse me, Councilmember Brewer. Councilman Fields. Councilman, Councilwoman Miles. Councilwoman Neville.
President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Willis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nickerson. And Mayor Wood.
Here. Here, we will now have a moment of, of silent prayer and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. Please join me in the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please be seated. Um, next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Alright.
Motion to the, to adopt the agenda.
Okay. It's been moved. I'll second it. Is there any, uh, discussion on the agenda? Alright, seeing done, motion to adopt the agenda for Tuesday, uh, November seventeen, twenty twenty. A motion made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by myself. Alright, Council Lady Neville.
Sure.
Councilwoman Willis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Yes.
Mayor Wood, yes. Alright, next on the agenda is the, uh, approval of the minutes from October twentieth. Everyone, uh, had to, got a chance to look at the minutes in the meeting package. Any amendments or any changes? Alright, seeing none, I welcome a motion to, uh, approve the October twentieth minutes.
So moved.
Okay, it's moved, is there a second? Okay. Oh, second, the motion. Any discussion? Alright, seeing no discussion, uh, there's a motion to approve the October twentieth minutes on a motion made by the Vice Mayor and seconded by myself. Um, Councilwoman Willis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Neville.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. Alright. Next on the agenda is the, uh, citizen comment period. Citizen comment period, citizens, we give them opportunity to speak for, uh, three minutes. Are there any citizens or attendees who, uh, want to make any comments to the council at this time? Okay, seeing no hands. I will close the citizen comment period. Alright, next is, uh, mayor and council comments. Alright, Councilwoman Neville, you have any comments you want to make to the?
Um, I'll just remind citizens, anyone tuned in, please mask up. Please take this pandemic seriously. Please reconsider your holiday gatherings. That's all. Love one another.
Amen, go right there. Councilwoman Willis.
The only thing I have to say is a, a big thank you to staff and, uh, the citizens in the town and the people at my church for sending, uh, cards and letters and condolences in the death of my granddaughter on October twenty fifth. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that, um, I hope that, um, following Councilwoman Neville's encouragement to mask up, as she mentioned, it is very serious out there and I do hope that we are all masking up and recognizing the importance of protecting not only ourselves, but the people that we come into contact with. Regardless of personal beliefs, what I hope that we can all agree on is that safety is paramount here. And the way to ensure that we are doing our part to have safety and healthy is to ensure that we are wearing our masks. Also, um, we know that Rosies had a job fair here in the town of Dumfries and I really do hope that folks took advantage of the opportunity to, um, engage in employment opportunities locally. They had, they are bringing some jobs to our area. If you were not able to participate in one of the two career fairs that they presented, um, they do still have some positions online, so please take advantage of the opportunity to work locally. I would love to be able to not have to commute. So please be sure to, to absolutely take advantage of that and thank you to those who participated in the career readiness workshop that I provided in order to prepare folks for the upcoming, um, well, well, not upcoming anymore, it actually just finished a few minutes ago. So I do appreciate those who were in attendance, I had a really good turnout. And I hope that even if Rosies is not the place for you, that, that information that you took, you, um, have been able to apply it and will help you in your career progression. And that's it, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, just want to say, um, again, happy past Veterans Day to all the veterans, uh, this month, uh, for celebrating. Want to continue to, uh, also, uh, again, say happy Thanksgiving. I don't think enough could be said about making sure the urgency of, of masking up. I know a lot of people are, are urging to come back and see us in person or to, to be, uh, face to face with a lot of our staff, but, um, we here in Dumfries are taking, uh, the pandemic and the emergency ordinance very seriously. Uh, the, the governor has put new precautions in place as of Sunday night that, um, these gatherings of two hundred and fifty have reduced back down to twenty five. Uh, mask wearing, uh, for businesses no longer a suggestion, but mask wearing is mandatory and it's chargeable at, to a class one misdemeanor, I do believe. And so, uh, we're definitely encouraging everybody to, you know, travel. If you need masks, if you don't have masks, I think you can, uh, come by our office. We, we might have a couple of extra laying around somewhere, but, you know, please, please, don't, 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 um, you know, don't, don't just think about yourself, think about the safety of others and, and their families and things like that. Also, um, we're, we're working hard, as you see, hopefully, um, you all know that vehicle taxes are due. We do not have tags to put on your vehicles, I mean, uh, stickers that put on your windows, but most of yous who are, have your vehicles registered here in the town of Dumfries should have gotten, received a letter by now. I believe the taxes on your vehicles are due by December the fifth, um, December the fifth. So if you, you have a vehicle, um, it's a personal property tax that we charge, it's twenty-four dollars per vehicle, but we're not giving out stickers for it. Uh, so please, we, we just want to be mindful of those things and, um, just take care. Take, um, some mental health and awareness days for yourself during this holidays. I know for some, uh, this has been a rough year, twenty twenty, uh, now you're going into the holiday season, some without loved ones that they had last year around the table. Uh, so just take time to excel, know it's okay to, to talk to somebody, to release your, you're not alone and Dumfries, we're all in this together. Uh, that's just the, hopefully the message, you know, that we're all in this together and we're here for you. With that, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, next on the agenda, the town manager's report. Mr. Rogers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to echo the sentiments of, uh, all of the council members, uh, this evening, uh, that we continue to take this pandemic very seriously. Um, so with the, uh, upcoming, uh, due date for our taxes and vehicle license, we are encouraging everyone to, uh, send in your payments by mail or to, uh, utilize our electronic payment system. Or if you absolutely need to, you can also drop off your payments within our drop boxes, uh, here at Town Hall. Uh, additionally, um, if businesses, uh, would like so, uh, additional signage or masks, our police officers have been equipped with, uh, Town of Dumfries masks and can provide those to you, uh, at no charge for any businesses that would like that. Uh, we also can provide you with signage regarding social distancing and the other CDC guidelines. And if you ever have any questions about the town's response or the latest updates regarding, um, our response to the pandemic, right on our homepage is our COVID nineteen, uh, page and we stay up to date with the CDC guidelines and the latest information from the governor's office in regards to the safer at home guidelines. Um, additionally, I would like to remind the neighbors that our upcoming paving schedule will kick off later this month. Uh, we will be posting, uh, specific information for the affected neighborhoods. Uh, but we are, weather permitting, will begin paving this month on Graham, Colonial, Hedman and Cursage Streets. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, on mute, my, my nephew ran down in the chambers and I had to kick him out. Um, question on, on, um, couple, one, one or two things. Can you give us an update on, um, as far as the COVID grants? Uh, our deadline ended on Sunday, but we just want to know how many applicants that we have and when can the applicants expect to hear a response for, uh, the grants that we put out? That's one, I'll start there.
Sure, the application deadline was this past Sunday at midnight, so we are currently reviewing the applications. So I will be planning to make contact with all the applicants, uh, by the end of this week.
Okay, by the end of this week. Alright, two, um, you know, everybody is, is anxious. We have a lot, some citizens who have driver's license who have expired and, you know, tags and stuff and they're concerned about, uh, is, is our, and I, I know in your report you put in there November thirtieth, but I give you opportunity to talk about the DMV and, uh, the protocol and what's going to happen at the end of this month with our DMV select.
So yes, so I noted that as a tentative date, um, and as we all are aware, um, unfortunately, the, uh, we're experiencing a surge and a spike in new cases, uh, especially within our own Prince William Health District. Uh, so we are, uh, making preparations and we, uh, have finalized preparations to, uh, make the DMV select and our customer service center open by appointment only. Um, however, uh, we are, uh, looking at adjusting that deadline based, uh, that reopening date based on the number of new cases. Um, just a reminder for everyone with specific DMV transactions to continue to check with the central, uh, centralized DMV webpage uh, with the state. Um, as many are aware, uh, many of those deadlines were extended and, uh, most DMVs across the Commonwealth are only open by appointment only. And so, uh, the DMV has tried to make efforts to accommodate. Um, so we will put out specific information about the exact reopening date and how to schedule appointments, uh, once we, uh, can provide, get some clarity there and hopefully see, uh, uh, start to see a decline in the number of new cases.
Okay, council, anybody on council have any, uh, questions for the town manager about anything in this report or anything he discussed? Alright, no questions. I, I had, uh, uh, one budgetary, uh, question. I see you posted the October report on the website, Chargers Report. Um, under the, uh, the personnel panel, I just wanted to know about the, uh, the boards and commissions. They've, uh, exhausted their training. Can you talk a little bit about all the training that the, the boards and commissions did? Was that all of them had the opportunity to, to finish their training for the year?
Yes, back in September, they, we conducted a training for the planning commission members and our, all of our board members.
Okay, that's exhausting. Alright. Alright, well that's all, okay. Councilwoman Neville?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was, uh, you kind of touched on a question I was going to ask about the CARES funding.
Okay.
How many applicants did we have?
Uh, approximately ten.
Okay, and, um, another question I had was, um, can you give a rundown or just share the types of, or how many openings we have on the towns, boards and commissions?
Um, I cannot, uh, give, I don't have that information. I cannot give, I don't have that information on the top of my head, but I can send council updated listing of all of our boards and commissions.
Okay. And I just have to again thank the police department for doing a wonderful job. They are excellent. I'm always in these conversations about things in government and I'm just like, you know, the Town of Dumfries Police Department, they exemplify what community policing should be. So I just can't say that enough. So I'd just like to applaud the police department for doing a great job as well as Ms. Ragland. I know there's a senior luncheon coming up. So if there are any singers tuned in and you'd like to be included on that luncheon, you may want to reach out to Ms. Ragland because it's a wonderful program. So that's all I wanted to add, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Neville. That's a, a great segue. Lisa, can you please note Councilman Fields has joined the conversation? Councilman Fields, did you have anything for the town manager on his report at all before we move on?
No.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, did you want to speak to any of your new hires that you brought on in the past couple of weeks? And just share the exciting news? I know that some have been posted, but?
Well, the police department has added two certified officers that began service this month. We also are scheduled to have two new recruits begin the academy in January.
And then how many would that leave us as far as being a fully, having a fully staffed police department?
We currently have 10 sworn personnel and with the recruits, once they complete the academy, that would give us a total of 12.
And we have 14 in the budget, is that what it is?
That's correct.
14 in the budget, okay. All right, any other questions from the council before we move forward? All right, seeing none. Next on the agenda are our proclamations for the month. And they will give Lisa an opportunity because I think the citizens love to hear her voice to, you know, to read off some of these proclamations. The first proclamation is one commemorating Elsie Garrison's birthday. And I remember our last meeting, we had a conversation back and forth if it was 99 and 100. And I've confirmed that she will be turning 99 this year. So Lisa, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Proclamation celebrating Ms. Elsie Garrison on the occasion of her 99th birthday. Whereas Ms. Garrison has been a joy and inspiration and has touched many lives by sharing her wisdom and experience with others. And whereas Ms. Garrison should be commended for her work with Dumfries United Methodist Church in the ministries of bread and fishes and the clothing closet, as well as serving as chair of the kitchen committee, serving on the nominating committee, being active in the United Methodist Women and Crafty Ladies, serving as the charter member of the Ladies Auxiliary of Dumfries Triangle Volunteer Fire Department and playing an active role in the Dumfries Senior Citizens Group. And whereas Ms. Garrison has been a positive influence on countless lives and had provided support to her late husband Coleman Jack Garrison while he served as mayor for the town of Dumfries. And now therefore it be proclaimed that the town council of the town of Dumfries recognizes and celebrates Ms. Elsie Garrison on the occasion of her 99th birthday for her lifetime of service to the town and its citizens.
This council, any council have any remarks on Ms. Garrison that they'd like to give before we move on? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Garrison. If you're watching us at home tonight, happy birthday to you. You know, if we was in person, we would have had a cupcake and we would have sung happy birthday to you. So we know you'll be celebrating this week. All right, next proclamation is a proclamation commemorating Clyde Washington's birthday. Lisa?
Proclamation celebrating Mr. Clyde Washington on the occasion of his 80th birthday. Whereas Mr. Washington has been valued member of the Dumfries Communities since 1971. And whereas Mr. Washington was born and raised in Fredericksburg, Virginia, where he is an outstanding athlete, setting multiple records in football, basketball and track. And whereas Mr. Washington received his undergraduate degree from Norfolk State University and his master's degree from Virginia State University. And upon graduation, taught and coached football at John F. Kennedy High School in Suffolk, Virginia. And whereas Mr. Washington began activity services in Dumfries Community through his father-in-law, including serving on the town council for 28 years, including eight years as vice mayor. And whereas Mr. Washington also served as chairman of trustees at Little Union Baptist Church for 16 years, deacon in Little Union Baptist Church, member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, NAACP, Virginia and National Education Association, and past president of Prince William County Schools District, Virginia Education Association. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town council of the town of Dumfries recognizes and celebrates Mr. Clyde Washington on the occasion of his 80th birthday and for his service to the Dumfries Community.
Wow. This is, I think is one thing we left out of that proclamation. Mr. Washington was the inaugural recipient of the Living Legacy Award at the Mayor's Ball last year. And so I think that was one, I think. And today, Councilwoman Neville, correct me if I'm wrong, today is the Omega Psi Phi fraternity. Are they celebrating their birthday today?
Today is Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated's 109th Founder's Day. That's 109 years providing impeccable service to communities all around the world. So how fitting for him to get that shout out today.
Yeah, happy 80th birthday. And I know his wife wanted to be around to receive this, but they had some other things. She, the family and friends, they did a tribute video. I think she said she'll send us that email later to show us the tribute video of what they did to celebrate his 80th birthday. All right, did anybody else have any comments or remarks they wanted to make about Mr. Washington before we move on? All right, seeing none. Next is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Lisa?
Proclamation, November 30th, 2019, A Small Business Saturday. Whereas the town of Dumfries, Virginia celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms and paid employees in the United States. And whereas small business employ 47.3% of employees in a private sector in the United States. And whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make to their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who, who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday say the day inspires them to go to small independently owned retailers and restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said that the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas Dumfries, Virginia supports our local businesses that cater jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas adversity groups as well as public and private organizations across the county have endorsed that small, or I'm sorry, that Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now the town council of the town of Dumfries, Virginia does hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of the community and communities across the county to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you, Lisa. I think Small Business Saturday is one of those, these, those proclamations that's near and dear to my heart as, as I too am a small business owners and I can attest to everything that was written in that resolution and fully support this proclamation. So to the community at large, you know, let's get out there. And I'm glad that we have, and I wish we would have had more than the 15 to apply for that grant to small business because I'm fully aware that we, we have a lot of those type of small business. I went around to a lot of the places personally, like Padreino's and Jimmy T's and encouraged all of them to apply for our COVID relief fund. So anybody have anything they want to say about the Small Business Saturday proclamation or resolution? All right, good. We're going to move on to the next proclamation for November as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Lisa?
National Alzheimer's Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas in 1983, President Ronald Reagan designated November as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is progressive brain disease that slowly deteriorates brain cells, affecting one's reasoning skills and abilities to perform simple tasks, ultimately leading to memory loss. And whereas Alzheimer's disease, which currently has no cure, is the sixth leading cause of death in adults age 18 or older in the United States. And whereas in Virginia, Alzheimer's case are expected to reach 190,000 by the year 2025. And whereas nearly 50% of the individuals with increased memory problems report they had no discussion, they, I'm sorry, they had not discussed their symptoms with the healthcare provider. Yet early and documented diagnosis with, when coupled with the access of care, planning services leads to better outcomes for individuals with Alzheimer's disease as well as their caregivers. And whereas caregivers and family members are crucial in maintaining a healthy quality of life for those battling Alzheimer's disease. And whereas the town of Dumfries recognizes the importance of researchers and advocates who are bringing us close to preventing this disease and the importance of family members who devotedly look after their loved ones. And whereas the town of Dumfries desires to honor those we have lost too soon and to encourage research efforts that will ensure more people can live their lives with healthy happiness. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Dumfries recognizes November as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month.
Well, thank you for that proclamation. Any comments, council? All right, next proclamation is a proclamation to recognize November as also as Native American Heritage Month.
Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas the town of Dumfries desires to celebrate a rich tapestry of the indigenous persons, or I'm sorry, indigenous people of the United States. Whereas the first American Indian Day was celebrated May 1916 in New York after Red Fox James, a member of the Blackfeet Nation, rode back, horseback from state to state to get endorsements from 24 state governments to have a day to honor American Indians. And whereas the Native American population is approximately 7 million, include those of more than one race. And whereas there is 573 federally recognized Native American tribes and 326 federally recognized reservations and trust lands. And where Virginia formally recognized 11 national, 11 Native American tribes. The Chickahominy in Charles City County, the Eastern Chickahominy in New Kent County, the Matapani in King William County, the Upper Matapani in King William County and the Nassimo in the city of Suffolk and Chesapeake and Rappahannock and King and Queen County. The Monkin Indian Nation in Amherst County and the Pohunki, Pohunki, sorry, of King William County and Chero Hockey in Southampton County and Notaway in Southampton County and Pohomak in Stafford County. Whereas Native Americans have a rich heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society. And whereas Native Americans are business owners, creating jobs for American workers, teaching, educating our children, first responders assisting neighbors in need and leaders serving our community. And whereas the town of Dumfries offices are closed each year on the second Monday in October to recognize the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Dumfries recognizes November as National American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Lisa, great job. I know some of those pronunciations were challenging, but we appreciate you reading off our Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Any council had any comments or any comment? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend Lisa also for getting through some of those, those tribe names because I, I can definitely see the challenge, so kudos to you, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right, next on our agenda is adjournment. Councilman Fields, did you have any remarks for the citizen before? I know you was able, you were having some computer issues, so give you opportunity to.
Yeah, thank you, man, I appreciate it. I did have some difficulty trying to get on, I'm at work, so it happens, but I did the best I could and finally made it. I just want to thank all the citizens for, first of all, early voting and casting your vote and coming out on Voting Day. We had a great turnout. I appreciate being reelected for a second term as your councilman for the town of Dumfries. So would like to just say, you know, thanks for voting. You know, voting is your power and we are your voice here for the town of Dumfries. Also, you know, everyone have a safe holiday. COVID numbers are rising. We put out a report just about every day, I believe, the town manager does. Just keep updated on our website and just stay safe and continue to mask up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fields. If nobody else has anything for the good, our next meeting is December the 1st. Everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Look out for your neighbors and the last message is, Councilwoman Neville has her background. Mask up Dumfries and we'll see, oh, there you go, mask up Dumfries. And we'll see you next time. Just have a great day.
Thank you.